Good morning, County Council. I would like to call to order this County Council meeting of October 9th, 2025. At this point in time, as you are able, please join us in the singing and standing for O Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct our roll call?
Counselor Mackey sends his regrets today. Counselor McKay, Counselor Carlton, Counselor Pringle, Counselor McQueen, Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Dicker, Counselor Kentner, Counselor Keveney, Counselor Body, Counselor Gregg, Counselor Milne, Counselor Dobrine, Warden Matrasovs, Counselor Bordingon.
Present.
Counselor Echols, Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
We have all members in attendance today with the exception of Counselor Mackey.
Thank you. Let us begin by acknowledging with respect that we are gathered on the traditional territory of the Inishnaabe Nation, the people known as the Three Fires, known as the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi Nations. We give thanks to the Chipwas Asagin and the Chipwas of Nauvash, collectively known as the Asagin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. In our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River and the Hoontisone. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples. At this point in time, I'll put out a call if there are any declarations of interest for our council agenda this morning. Seeing no hands, we will move on to the adoption of the minutes. Item 6A, it's recommended that the minutes of County Council meeting and committee, the whole meeting dated September 25th, 2025, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. They ask for a mover. Moved by Counselor Gregg, seconded by Counselor Keveney. Any discussion? Counselor McQueen.
Like you, Madam Warden, and just reviewing the minutes, I was not here at the last meeting, and I'm not here to ask for a reconsideration, but I do want to bring some comments to those minutes with regards to the discussion around Greg Abel's and the report that was in front of council and the decision that County Council made. A couple of things, when the decision to apply for those extra beds was made, it was felt that this body felt that in order to make that facility more efficient, that application for more beds was needed, hence the County Council applied for those beds. The model that was applied for was for a brand-new build with regards to changing the current Rockwood, or sorry, the current Greg Abel's into a long-term, or sort of a, what do you call it, assisted living. That was the model that was applied for. I do think that this body should have a conversation about, is that still where this body wants to go? And I know there was a motion passed around 2022 that said we would pause on the redevelopment and the new beds for Greg Abel's until the tender was issued for Rockwood Terrace. That motion has not really been followed through on. Also, the discussion around maybe with the province and with the Long Term Care Minister could be discussed that, like I said, the model that was applied for was a brand-new build, and I think the discussion that happened at last County Council was, if you do a brand-new build, you don't get money to build the 66, you only get money to build the additional 62. So, we did have a presentation from a consultant with regards to the model of converting Greg Abel's into assisted living, and there was a revenue generation from that assisted living that would help offset those costs of those extra beds, that you're not getting funding from the province. But I think at some point, and maybe it's the Long Term Care Task Force Committee maybe could look at the opportunity, is that what this body still wants today? Or could we reconsider an application or amended application to build a wing that would incorporate maybe 62 or 64? There's that model of 32 beds per nurse and all that kind of stuff. So I just would like to suggest that from that conversation that happened and other conversations we had over the years, to take it back to maybe that Long Term Care Committee and have that discussion and have a further discussion of this body. I understand that the heavy cost of the Rockwood Terrace, and I think that was a lot of the discussion that happened at the last meeting and how the inflated cost per bed has risen over the last few years. And also with regards to the model that has been applied for Greg Abel's, and it's a heavy cost and it's a lot more involved. But maybe we need a revision on what we are asking for, or at least have that conversation. So I suggest maybe at some point, Madam Warden, that we have this further discussion as to the motion that was passed back in 2022 or thereabouts, that it be deferred and not, and be considered at this body after the tender was issued for Rockwood Terrace. So we haven't actually followed up on that motion as well. So I'll leave it at that, and it's for conversation, but I think we need a further conversation of maybe what this body would prefer to go to, if that's the different direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor, and that motion is carried. Next, we have, it is item 6B, it is recommended that the closed session committee of the whole minutes of dated September 25th, 2025 be adopted as provided. Moved by the Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Kentner. Any discussion? All those in favor, and that motion is carried. And the final set of minutes is item 6C, which is the Long Term Care Committee of Management Meeting Minutes. It's recommended that the Long Term Care Committee of Management, sorry, Long Term Care Committee of Management Meeting Minutes dated September 18th, 2025 be adopted as presented and that the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. And that is number one, the report LTCRCM 1325 regarding a Long Term Care Director update be received for information. And number two, that report LTCRCM 1425 regarding the Long Term Care Operational Report dated June 15th to August 14th be received for information. May I ask for a mover in a second, or moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Carlton. It's now on the floor for discussion, so. There you are, Director Cornell. The floor is yours.
Oops, thank you very much, Warden, and through you, good morning, County Council. As the Warden has already summarized, there were two reports at this meeting. One is the Director's Update and a couple of highlights from that. Just like to announce that Terry Fisher has stepped into the role as Executive Director at Rockwood Terrace, and we're really pleased to make that announcement and welcome her to that meeting, while Karen Kraus steps into the sole focus of operational readiness, getting ready for the move into the new Rockwood. Another couple of highlights, just wanted to mention that we are well underway in preparing for the upcoming, which is really now here, respiratory season, and are actively getting preparations in place for the influenza and COVID vaccine clinics that we offer for the residents, for designated care partners, and for team members. And finally, just wanted to highlight that we had a great tour of the three homes with Warden Matrasov, CAO Schertz, and Deputy CAO Lobbly. We had a chance to go to all three of the homes and saw something different at each of them, and it was a really great day for us to be able to connect with the team members and the residents and for the team to be able to highlight some of their colorate stories for the senior leadership. The Operational Report covers the period of June 15th to August 14th and highlights a number of areas that are noted, and if there's any questions about those, happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. We do have another item coming afterwards, but with regards to what has been moved and seconded on the floor for discussion, are there any questions for Director Cornell? Okay, we'll go over to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you for your condensed version of that day. It was a great day, and there's a lot of concrete and block, and a lot of space, for sure. And I don't know, through Madam Warden, to Director Cornell, you spoke a little bit about when it's completed, about having full capacity. I don't know if you want to be in touch base a little bit, because there's a certain timeframe for funding, and I have a follow-up to that that I noticed somewhere else, but. Sorry.
Thank you, and through you, Warden Matrasov, I might, that is a topic of the next set of minutes, so if you're good with waiting, I'll make sure that I cover that off in the next summary.
Okay, so any others for this particular set of minutes? Okay, I don't see any further hands up nor online, so I'll call the question, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Okay, so if you just don't go far. Item 6D, it's recommended that the Long Term Care Redevelopment Planning Task Force Meeting Minutes dated September 24th, 2025 be adopted as presented, and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed, and there are a list of eight resolutions that were contained in the minutes that have been duly circulated to both council and the public. So I will ask for a mover in a second or there. Moved by Counselor Dobrine, seconded by Counselor McQueen. It's now on the floor for discussion. Director Cornell.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and through you. We also had an opportunity at this meeting to have a tour through the construction site with the members of the Redevelopment Task Force, and it was a little damp, but I have not yet toured where it isn't raining or snowing, but that day will come, I'm sure. But it is exciting. It's dot roof, and there's beams going up, and you can start to see what it's going to look like, so that was a really exciting opportunity. And the next time, it won't be wet, and there'll probably be lights, and it'll be even better. So as the Warden had mentioned, there is a series of resolutions that we discussed and went through at the meeting. The first is around single sourcing, beds, bedside tables, overbed tables, lifts, tubs, sole sourcing, food production management support for the new Rockwood Terrace. And we had a really good discussion with the committee at that meeting about our practices and processes for single source, why we do it, when, how do we vet it? And so it was a good discussion. We already do a sole source, nope, we do a single source for our lift equipment, for example, and that is to maintain some standardization across the three homes. We have maintenance contracts with the provider that provides the equipment. We have the same equipment at all three homes. There are personalized slings, for example, that go with lift equipment, and we want to make sure that for safety reasons for the resident and for the team members, that we're not having to kind of figure out which sling goes with which brand of lift equipment, as an example. So we had that discussion. The discussion that Counselor McQueen is mentioning is the one regarding the operational readiness, estimated budget impacts, and there was some good, very good discussion around that. And as we anticipate the timelines now, and these can change and be flexible, and so we're preparing for that, but as we're anticipating, the move is January 2027, which means there's going to be some expenses that kind of overlap between 2026 and 2027. So we need to onboard and recruit a number of staff. Estimated right now is approximately 47 new team members, and there is a link to a chart that outlines our proposed staffing complement. All of these details need to be fine-tuned and submitted to the Ministry of Long Term Care for inspection. We aren't able to make that kind of a move without two inspections that have passed by the Ministry of Long Term Care, and then we're able to make that move. So the onboarding and recruitment of new team members, we're onboarding them, and then we're moving to a brand-new building, so we also need to ensure that there's education for the new team members, education and training on the different services, the layout of the building, things as simple as where they used to go get this piece of equipment, this, these linens, et cetera, are all going to be new, so we need to account for that. The other areas that are, that we've considered in terms of operating both spaces is a month of additional maintenance personnel to support the dual operations during the transition. So it's winter in Durham, so we'll need to be doing snow removal at the existing Rockwood, snow removal at the new Rockwood, for example. Mentioned recruitment costs for proposed new staff, additional hours for housekeeping personnel, so we need to make sure the new home is in tip-top shape, and we want to be cleaning the existing home, and there'll be a period of time where people are living in both for a day or two. Supplies is another area where the new building needs to be turnkey, ready to go. So when we move the residents, and at this stage, we're planning to do that move in one day, so hopefully it's a light winter. But we will be, even though it's just around the corner, we won't be, we will be bringing in transportation to, we can't, if it was June, maybe we could wheel some people over and have a little parade, but that will not be the case in January. So I don't think so. Some might want to do it, but. And so we need to have one month's worth of essential supplies, including medical supplies, paper products, food and cleaning, chemicals, as I mentioned, snow removal services, heat, hydro, water, fire protection for both buildings. We've also included security, so we'll need to have security at the new build while we're waiting to make the transition, and then when we've made the move, we'll need to have security on the existing Rockwood Terrace. And of course, the purchase of new linens, dishes, glassware, and cutlery. So we are anticipating those costs and those services and resources need to be in place. As I mentioned, it is a bit of a moving target. When we get closer, we'll have a much better sense of the time, so if the move happens a little later, there may not be an impact to 2026 at all. If the move, so just to know that there is a moving target there, but as we see it right now, we're planning for that anticipated move date. Oh, wait, there's more, there's more. And then finally, and if there's questions about this, I will defer to CAO Schertz. CAO Schertz brought a report regarding an update on the tender results and cost-sharing breakdown of the South East Street project, and there was some discussion around that as well. And I'll hand it back to you, Warden Matrasov.
Okay, CAO Schertz, or did you want to do any introductory comments before I put it out for questions?
Sure, just to build on Jen's comments about the South Street East project and that amended agreement is actually is part of the council package today. So just a refresher for this, there is a stormwater system under South Street East that needs upgrades in order to handle the runoff from the Rockwood Terrace, as well as the Rockwood Early Works that we call, based on the South Street East extension, the Rock Street extension that was required for, to support this build. The current infrastructure is undersized, it lacks sufficient slope and could pose then further flood risks if not upgraded. So West Gray and its consultant proposed a two-phased replacement of the storm sewer from Elgin to County Street. So Phase A is currently underway as we speak. Phase B will start next year. All of that will be completed by the fall of next year, which aligns with the Rockwood Terrace redevelopment, as Director Cornell just noted in terms of timing. Under the Rockwood Early Works Cost Sharing Agreement, West Gray and Gray County committed to sharing the costs of the downstream improvements, and earlier this year, County Council approved an upset limit of 1.7 million for its share, the final amounts determined post-tender. Contract was awarded to Moorefield Excavating by West Gray. That was the lowest bidder. The total project cost is just over $3 million. West Gray's share is about 1.9 million, Gray County's share came in at 1.2 million, so approximately just under, just over, or under $500,000, based on the upset limit that was established earlier. So based on that, there's a, it's broken down into two phases, so 780,000 this year, 443,000 next year. That will be funded from the Rockwood Terrace Redevelopment Project, and there's sufficient funds within that overall project to cover those costs. And so as I noted, an amending agreement has been prepared, which is included in today's council's agenda. Oops.
Okay, so we'll go to questions. We'll start with the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Jen, for the report. The notion of the single sourcing, it always makes me just a little bit nervous when we're going to a sole or single source, you know, to buy anything, really. But I've had a number of conversations with Jen and some other members of her staff, and there are a host of really good reasons why we need to do this. Patient or resident safety is of paramount importance, and that is the primary reason why we should do what is being proposed, and I want to thank Jen for comforting my mind, so to speak, that we're doing the right thing, so thank you, Jen.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, just to follow up, and thanks for your response there, Jen. You just, I guess you had mentioned something about full occupancy in order to get full funding, and the reason I raise that, I was through Steiner just last week, and they just opened a new long-term care home there, and it has a sign of beds available or something like that, and I thought when you said that time, we have to get around 100% occupancy to get our full funding, and that was the part I was raising.
Thank you, Counselor McQueen, and through you, Warden Matrasovs, thank you for raising that. In our work with Colliers project managers that are helping us get ready for operational readiness, because there is a great deal of regulations that go along with that, they have briefed us very early in this process that the occupancy expectation by the ministry is to be at full occupancy in 14 days of the move, which is, I have concerns about that level of expectation. We are moving potentially 85 to 100 residents from existing Rockwood. There'll be a time where we stop moving in new residents as we, as the date of the move comes closer. So it's hard to say, it's winter, uh, it's hard to say what our occupancy of the existing Rockwood will be, but probably around ninety residents to a hundred. They will make a move along with a hundred and eighty-nine to two hundred and twenty-five team members to, um, figure out how to live and work in a brand new building that they have had fairly limited experience working in. And then, um, move in another twenty-eight to thirty-five residents in fourteen days. Uh, it's a, I think it's an unrealistic expectation. And it's something that I have raised with our association, Advantage Ontario, and might be something we discuss as a potential delegation topic, uh, at the upcoming Roma. Uh, it's not a dignified expectation. This is a, making a move into long-term care is one of the most significant decisions and experiences that someone has to make for themselves or someone that they love. And we, we know from experience that when the move in is done well, that the experience living in the home is much better than when the move in feels like a chaotic, um, uh, experience. And there's some, we have some big concerns about what that experience might be for those twenty-five or thirty, twenty-five to thirty-five people moving in two at a time, two a day. Essentially, it's two a day, maybe even three a day. So thank you for raising that, and this is something that we will bring to, um, law, either Committee of Management, redevelopment task force, County Council, wherever the appropriate place is to bring this again. Uh, I, I will be, um, hoping to bring this forward for further discussion.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Warden. That's part of, uh, fourteen days did not seem realistic. And so, I mean, maybe, maybe more like two months might seem more. And, and I don't know if you talked to other new homes that are opening yet, they've had some, some mediation or, or some flexibility on that part. But I just thought it was interesting that signs said beds available from a brand new home. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments for these minutes? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands online or in the room, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Director Pernell. We do not have any closed meeting matters to discuss nor reports, so we can go straight to item number nine, which is the bylaws. It's recommended that bylaws fifty-two, fifty-two, twenty-five and fifty-two, fifty-three, twenty-five be introduced and taken as read first, second and third time, finally passed, signed by the warden and the clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation and engrossed into the bylaw book. Number one, fifty-two, fifty-two, twenty-five, a bylaw to amend the infrastructure responsibility and cost sharing agreement for the Rockward, Rockwood Terrace early works. And number two, fifty-two, fifty-three, twenty-five, a bylaw to confirm all actions and proceedings of the council. They ask for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Dickert and seconded by Counselor Echols. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. News and celebrations, we've got two, uh, different, uh, news items to come forth from staff. We'll begin with those. Uh, first up, uh, Director Taylor, I believe you have some exciting news to share with us.
Yeah, good morning, uh, Madam Warden and members of County Council. So today I have some very good news to share with you on behalf of the Plan Department. I'd like you to join me in congratulating Cassandra Dillman, the county's intermediate planner, who's sitting in the back here with us today, uh, who recently passed her professional exam to become a registered professional planner, or you might know the acronym, RPP. For those that might be unfamiliar, uh, registered professional planners in Ontario are certified as such after, after obtaining the required education, logging years' worth of work experience and passing both an ethics and a final professional examination. I'm sure there's probably a joke there about taking years to become a planner and, and going through the process, but I'm, I'm not going to touch that one. Um, so once these requirements, once these requirements have been met, planners can use the official RPP title and can vote, and can more easily be qualified to give professional opinion evidence at tribunals. After certification, planners need to uphold these requirements by not only acting in the public interest, but they're also bound by the professional code of practice and are required to complete a defined amount, required to complete a defined amount of professional learning credits each year. So once again, I'd like to congratulate Cassandra on this, uh, remarkable achievement.
Excellent news indeed, and I think it's always a healthy reminder about what goes in behind our professional and certified, uh, planners and, and all the other professions that are guided. We hear a lot from long-term care. We know all the processes you have to go through there. Early childhood education, there are so many fields that, uh, that we see here among the staff of Gray County that require a lot of dedication to their own profession in order to deliver an outstanding service as they do. So with that, we have some more exciting news. I think the Rock Band AC, A, A, B, C, D is here. And, uh, I witnessed a wonderful beginning of an event that you're going to share with us. It was a fantastic effort and so many people were so thrilled to be there. So take it away, please, uh, Director Shaw.
Good morning, Warden and County Council. I'd like to ask Tara Cockrell to come up to the podium. Tara's our, uh, early learning and childcare manager. Uh, each year we provide, or we receive funding from the province in order to host professional learning events uh, for all of our early on educators and all of our childhood, uh, childhood educators in, in, um, in Gray County. So Tara and our team put together an amazing event on September twenty-sixth and are here to share some detail.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. Um, as Anne Marie said, we had a great, uh, event on September twenty-sixth. Just wanted to share some information about that. So as I've shared in the past, um, our early childhood educators play an essential role in supporting the growth, learning and wellbeing of young children. Through their dedication and professionalism, ECEs provide safe, nurturing and engaging environments to help children develop the skills and confidence they need to thrive. On September twenty-sixth, we prepared for nearly three hundred team members from the early learning sector to join the ELCC team in Owen Sound for a day of professional learning. It was a day filled with conversation, collaboration and a lot of fun. This third annual Growing Great Kids event has grown so much that we had to host the day in two locations at both the Bay Shore and at the Best Western. Hey, that worked great. Um, some of our topics included special workshops on nutrition for our cooks and nutritionists in the childcare programs, um, maker space and risky play, uh, sessions from ECCDC that you see here. We got to witness how to incorporate wood burning into the school age program, which was really interesting to learn how that could be done safely. Um, we had, um, mindful Mike, Mike Massey come up to talk to both sessions in the morning and in the afternoon about being kind to your mind, very important for all of us, but especially people working in this sector. And during the lunch break, we had a lot of fun as well, everything from cornhole, giant Jenga and our very, very popular giant think-o game. We also acknowledged ECE Appreciation Day that takes place on October twenty-first, an opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate the valuable contributions of these educators in our communities. I'd like to thank Warden Matrasovs and Director Shaw for providing opening remarks at each location. And this event would not, um, happen without the organization's support and creativity of the small but mighty early learning and childcare teams. Some of them are here with me today. Some of them are providing work, um, programming right now. So again, a special thank you to our team, um, Ashley, Kristen, Lori, Jill, Stacy, Katie, Kim, Julie and Rachel. Leading up to ECE Appreciation Day, we encourage everyone to take an opportunity to thank ECEs in our community for their commitment and the positive impact they have on children, families and the broader community.
Thank you very much, Manager Cockrell, and thank you to the entire crew that put that effort together. It, uh, it was very clear from the moment I walked through the doors that this was a well-executed, organized day that as, uh, as, uh, Manager Cockrell said, was so popular that there was actually a spillover into the Best Western as well. So how fantastic was that? People were looking so forward to connecting with each other that, that day, but the content of the programming that you provided was outstanding. So thank you so much for all that, that, uh, you're truly in your roles. You're helping others achieve more than outstanding work in their own roles, so it can't happen without you. Thank you. Okay, so with that then, we'll put it out to, uh, County Council members for news and celebrations that you'd like to share. We'll begin with Counselor Kentner.
Thank you, uh, Madam Matrasovs, uh, Warden Matrasovs. Um, kind of shocked a little bit this morning. Uh, only recently did I write a, write a letter endorsing the need for a new public school in, uh, Meaford. But, uh, we learned today through, uh, the press that, uh, Meaford is getting a new K to grade three, uh, and daycare, um, uh, on the former track and field property on Aiken Street, opposite the former Georgian Bay Secondary School. And, uh, as residents of Meaford, uh, Shirley and I are both very well aware of how badly this is needed. The, uh, the, the new, uh, community school is, uh, bursting at the seams. And all of this, uh, because Meaford is truly growing.
Thank you, and I'll look to other members to share news. We'll go to Counselor McKay.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, just to bring you up to date, uh, I had some good news from my mayor and your fellow councillor. Uh, he's back in Ontario, which is a blessing. And, uh, he sends all his best. Uh, he has a number of appointments that he has to attend and, uh, he's going to keep me up to date and it kind of opens your eyes to know how much a mayor does when the deputy mayor has to take over the position of mayor. So just might have to do twice as much work. But, uh, anyway, uh, I'm glad to do it for him and, uh, hope I can help him out a bit on, uh, recuperating and getting, getting back to work again, so. Thanks. Keep, keep him in your, uh, blessings.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor McKay. And indeed, I'm sure it's reassuring that you're there in the driver's seat to be able to assist. So that it, it truly, that must be a, a comforting message back to, uh, the, the whole Mackey family. And certainly on behalf of all of Council, we continue to, to keep him in our thoughts and are excited to hear these, these news, news updates in progress. So thank you very much for sharing that. And other, uh, we'll go over to Counselor Boddy.
Thank you, uh, Warden, uh, last, no, one day last week, Deputy Mayor Greg and I had the opportunity of welcoming, uh, um, the Ontario Lieutenant Governor, um, Dumont to, uh, to Owen Sound as she got off the, uh, boat from the, uh, HMCS. I'll look at those in the right order, Her Majesty's Canadian ship, yes, uh, Margaret Brook. And, uh, we had a nice little, nice little visit with, uh, Lieutenant Governor. We look forward to her returning to the area, which she is very keen to do at some point, uh, given her experience that she was up here. It's also a pretty special to welcome the, uh, Canadian, Canadian Navy ship in the, uh, Owen Sound harbor. They're touring through, uh, the upper lakes, um, really in a recruiting mission. We got to go out for a little, little boat ride on, uh, Monday, and it's an unbelievable piece of technology from, from, from a guy that likes to sail in a nineteen eighty sailboat. It's, uh, it was pretty amazing and great crew, great, uh, great to have them in the area. Anyone see any questions about the ship, ask me after. Thanks.
Thank you, and we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Well, I think it must be mentioned that our, the beloved Toronto, or Toronto Blue Jays won last night in New York, which I think was a defeat in itself. Uh, I'm one of those that remember back in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three of the run that they had back then, which was pretty exciting. And remember back then how it was sort of a, a unity through Canada at that time? I think this is again, another opportunity for our team, the Canadian team, to even bring us more, um, faith in our team and our country and everything else, because it is only one ball team in, in Canada that represents us and they're at the, at the, at the head of the, at the head of the part of, of maybe winning it all for the World Series. So let's cheer on our Blue Jays and, uh, and, uh, certainly look, look for some good times in the next few weeks for sure, because that was an interesting time in ninety-two, ninety-three.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, for sharing that baseball news and to the deputy warden who wants to remember that, uh, wants us to remember that hockey is always forever in our hearts as well. And, uh, with that, we're going to go to Counselor Borden Y'all, and then we'll go to Counselor Dobrine.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden. Good morning, County Council. Uh, just a bit of good news on the physician recruiting front. Um, it's, you know, I know it's an effort done by not just all nine member municipalities, but throughout the province. So our town's physician recruitment, uh, working group has been successful in, um, luring a doctor, getting a doctor, Dr. Sonia Bali will be starting, um, in the town of the Blue Mountains. Um, I believe there's a reception for her tomorrow. Um, she's going to be working at the Blue Mountains Community Health Center on King Street in Thornbury. Um, she's worked across the province and across the country. And she'll support patients not only in the town of Blue Mountains, at our long-term care facilities in Thornbury and Meaford and throughout the Meaford Hospital. So it's, it's good news all around for, um, for our area and into Meaford and all those serviced by the Meaford Hospital. So I just wanted to share that piece of, uh, information with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, and next we'll go to Counselor Dobrine.
Thank you. Good morning, Warden and County Council and visitors. I just wanted to let everyone know that Southgate is, uh, going to be enjoying a Diwali event tomorrow evening at the Dundalk Legion. It's a celebration of light, unity and community spirit. It is a free event, but registration is required. It is being held at the Legion, as I said, in Dundalk from six-thirty to eight-thirty.
Thank you very much. Other news and celebrations. Back over to Counselor McKay.
Thank you. Uh, just to bring you up to date, uh, through you, Warden, uh, if you have any complaints you'd like to bring forward to me, uh, you can, uh, text them to me or email them to me. And, uh, I'll, uh, be going, I'm a director on, uh, Good Roads, and this morning I heard that we're invited to sit with the Minister of Transportation, have lunch with them. So I'm hoping I can sit right next to them and maybe keep them from eating and ask a whole bunch of questions. More around Sixth and Tenth Highway and a couple of other ones, entrance permits. But, uh, if you have any concerns, I don't want to keep them too long, but, uh, I know we have a lot of concerns out there from the county. But anyway, if you got any, uh, thing you want to ask, I'll ask.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other news and celebrations to share? Okay, not seen any further hands up. Okay, all right then. Uh, that allows us then to look for adjournments, so may I ask for a mover and a seconder? Uh, moved by the deputy warden, seconded by, uh, Counselor Nielsen, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. We'll give a moment to switch over. Thank you. I'd like to call to order this committee, the whole meeting of October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this point in time, I'll put out a call if there are any declarations of interest on this agenda. Seen no hands raised. We'll move on. We have, uh, business arising from the minutes. We have one notice of motion from Counselor Greg. So in a moment, Counselor Greg, I will ask you to read out your notice of motion, uh, without any explanation or intro. I'll look for a seconder for you, and if we have a seconder and it's on the floor for discussion, I will return to you directly. So, um, would you like to, could you read, sorry? I, the way we usually do it back home is the person who's serving the notice of motion reads it out and then we look for a seconder before there's any discussion. So over to you. The mic is yours.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and I'd like to introduce, uh, the notice of motion. Whereas part two of the municipal act generally confers broad authority on the municipality to enable the municipality to govern its affairs as it considers appropriate and to enhance the municipality's ability to respond to municipal issues. And whereas community safety is of foremost concern to residents and whereas automated speed traffic cameras assist in responding to resident concerns. Now therefore be it resolved that this council asks MPP Vickers and MPP Sanderson to support this position in opposing any provincial legislation introduced to prohibit the use of automated speed enforcement and that this resolution be circulated to each municipality within Gray County requesting their endorsement and that the resolution be sent to Premier Ford, Minister of Transportation, Pravmeet Sikaria, MPP Vickers and MPP Sanderson.
Thank you very much, and I, okay, well, sorry, uh, directionally, I saw, uh, Counselor Dobrine will second that motion, but I did acknowledge the other hands that have been raised. It's now on the floor for discussion, so I will, uh, look to Counselor Greg. So I will look to councillor Greg to introduce your notice, any further details you'd like to provide.
Thank you, and I'd like to just provide this notice also as a tribute to a member of our community in Owen Sound who campaigned for years canvassing for candidates who were strong supporters of looking after the taxpayer. That's something that Bill King, who was a member for many years on our operations committee in Owen Sound advocated for and supported initiatives that looked after the taxpayer. And we lost Bill probably a little more than a year ago. But this is somewhat of a tribute to Bill because he was a strong advocate for community safety and automated speed enforcement and cameras were part of that in Bill's, in Bill's mind. So I am quite bothered by what the premier has initiated here. It is demonstrated when he announced this legislation, he had the mayor of Bond standing beside him. Bond removed traffic cameras in their communities and that is fine. That's democracy as it should be, and I applaud him for that. But I think what is most important is that the municipalities have the opportunity to decide whether or not those traffic cameras are something that are a benefit in their community, that respond to residents' concerns. And if you do not feel that way and you have them already installed, you can walk back that decision municipally. It's a municipal decision. And he aligned himself, the day he announced the legislation, with other mayors who demonstrated that. It is a municipal decision and it's a municipal decision as provided in the municipal act. If you want to take away the ability for municipalities to look after resident concerns, change the municipal act. I challenge you to do that because that invites a whole lot more public input and a lot more time. It's announced that the assault on the taxpayer is over. And I asked myself, really? Who do you think funds the provincial government? And all the infrastructure that you're now asking to be created out of a new fund? What I'd like to do is invite the premier to come to Owen Sound to visit with me and one of our fine men and women who drive a snowplow and a fire truck. And we will crush a box of Chapman's ice cream bars as we walk around the city and we will inform the premier and the premier staff of what kind of obstacles that speed bumps and enhanced crosswalks provide in terms of the machinery and the mechanics in a snowy area that we have to look after for, for five, hopefully not six months of the year. But it's hard in the equipment, it's hard on money, it's hard on the taxpayer. It's hard on people who we're not breaking the law if you don't speed. That's, it's a fundamental, easy question. If you don't want to get fined, don't speed past a school or through a community safety zone. Hopefully you learn your lesson. And then it's not resultant upon the taxpayers who may not have a car, who may choose to walk as their means of transportation or use public transit. These are the people now that are being asked to pay more taxes for a new fund provincially to resolve, to respond to speeding that may or may not make a difference in moving the needle. It reminds me of, to steal a quote from Abraham Lincoln, let's have a government for the people, by the people. And that's why I would hope the premier would entertain a free vote at Queen's Park so that each legislator can represent their people and not have a whip vote. Where we've lost that ability now to have meaningful dialogue at Queen's Park. Let's have democracy, let's have a free vote. Let's have legislators who've been elected represent their communities. We're here as mayors and deputy mayors representing what we think is best in our communities. I'm asking this council to ensure that we have the opportunity to address those items in our community without those abilities being taken away from us and positioned in the sole hands of one person and the prime minister's office or the premier's office, which has become far too prevalent, it seems, in the last several years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that introduction. So it is now on the floor for discussion from further comments from other council members. We'll go to councillor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasovs. The biggest concern with the way the province is addressing this is trying to attack it as if it is a municipality trying to do a cash grab. And this is the terminology that the premier is using. And it is frustrating to what councillor Greg just spoke to when the objective is to try to change the culture of speeding within Ontario. Currently, wherever you go, the general culture is 20 kilometers over a speed limit. We design roads and then we have repeated calls on probably weekly basis. Everybody here gets a call from some resident talking about the speeding across and in front of their property and in front of their area. Trying to implement a culture change takes many different methods. The premier responded to a letter that was sent to him by many different mayors and local municipal politicians from across Ontario by saying, if the objective of the speed camera is to prevent speeding, then it's failing miserably. Well, according to that standard, then your stop signs are failing, your signage for the speed limit is failing, your signage for crosswalks is failing because everywhere there is a culture of impatience, of driver, lack of driver empathy in terms of who's around them. It is a method to try to address that in addition to all the other things we're trying to change. I think that there's a frustration with Premier Ford overstepping into what the motion is speaking to, our jurisdiction of trying to make controls. But fundamentally for me, this is a safety thing that residents bring up time and time again. We're trying to change the culture and the premier is preventing us from doing it.
Thank you, and we'll go to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, and as the seconder, thank you for recognizing me. I have to echo both speakers, both of my colleagues. But also, not all municipalities have, are, are, sorry, let me rephrase this. Most municipalities with automated speed enforcement are following the guidelines. And the revenue that they are getting, which isn't the full amount, because the province gets a significant portion of that, are reinvesting the revenue specifically for improved safety in those community safety zones. So that the taxpayer isn't on the hook for those improvements. That's my comment, and I was pleased to support this motion.
Thank you, other comments? We'll go to councillor McQueen.
Thank you, madam warden. That may be a devil's advocate here, but just I see two parts in this notice of motion. One is the ability for municipalities to make decisions. Well, back in 1980, 1990, sorry, I gotta get my dates here. 2008, 2009, there's what they call the Green Energy Act came into play. It took away our ability to decide for green energy projects. And that wasn't played until, for quite a long time. And there was a lot of discussion around that. I know with us in Greyhounds, we developed policy around placement of turbines and that was early. So it's not ununique that we've dealt with legislation that does direct or guide or basically tells what the lower tier or the municipalities, what they, because we are creatures of the province. We know that, right? On the part of speed cameras, I remember at the Feuerstein Fair a few weeks back, having a large discussion around a number of people having concern of a particular area of a municipality south of Greyhounds that had speed cameras. And the threshold was two kilometers over the speed. So if it was a 40, you get a ticket for 42. Which seemed, it was quite a bit of a concern around that. And that, I go to the threshold, it was just on the news two days ago. One of the councillors from the city of Toronto is going to advocate because the threshold is not disclosed. I think in the sense of our democracy and everything else, why don't the people know what that threshold is, if it's 10 over or 12 over or five over or two over? So I think there's a bit of a, and I think as Deputy Mayor or councillor Nielsen said, it's an understanding that if you're on a provincial highway or municipal road or whatever, that from a, from a police perspective, if you're maybe under 15, that's just the way it has been. And I think nobody's going to disagree with that, we know that. So I think the threshold is one of the issues that, that, I know that was a big discussion that I had with a number of people there. Some of the other things I've heard is, is if it was set up for community safety zones and school zones, I also hear it's in other zones. There's no debate for the protection of kids or those areas where the pedestrians, I, you know, maybe there needs to be rework of this, but not totally out. I don't disagree with that. But that is something else that it's been on others that I've heard. I don't know a lot about this. Signage has been another thing that we, interesting that the city of Toronto has said, look, we need more signs up, we need to tell people. So maybe there has been a few issues that needs to be rectified. I heard of an example of that same community, south of Greyhounds, that a fella was racing to the hospital because his mother was dying at 4:30 in the morning. At 4:30 in the morning, he got a huge ticket. We're, and, and so is a safety zone at 4:30 in the morning? I know in Gray Road 4, we have the flashing light and Maxwell goes off when it's a school, goes from 50 to 40. It's a school zone, it's reduced speed at that time when there's buses and kids. So I guess in summary, you know, I think the intention was there. I think there needs to be a rework on some of this stuff to maybe get more public support. And I just think that there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of dynamics here that one size isn't fitting all. And I think one of the things is the threshold. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much. Just looking around for any first hands before I go back to any additional comments. Not seeing any, so I'll go back to councillor, oh, I'll go to councillor, Deputy Warden Milne and then over to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, Warden. I think the fundamental thing here is the speed limit is the law. So if the speed limit's 40, you're regardless, so what you think the threshold should be? If you're over 40, you're breaking the law, whether you're in a safety zone or not. So if I hurt somebody in the middle of the night at 4:30 speeding, do I get a lesser fine? Is that sort of the logic that we're going through here? I had a discussion with the local MPP and he stated that he had heard that a local business has incurred over $1,000 in speeding fines and that was unfair. I said, well, the logical thing would be for that company to slow down and they wouldn't get the fine. It's as simple as that. But to bring it right back to what the motion is speaking to, if the premier really wants to dictate the municipalities, what they should do, there's an election next year for municipal government and maybe he should run there. Otherwise, stick to your net. Thank you, madam warden.
Thank you, and just in follow-up, I know that the Big City Mayor's Caucus from AMO and a, an interview with the mayor of Burlington, Mary Ann Mead Ward. I believe the ask, it's not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Don't throw out the tool that can benefit our communities. Let's visit what the threshold should be. Let's visit what additional signage there should be. Let's visit if there's a timeframe. But let's have the conversation as opposed to ripping tools out of our toolbox that help us protect our citizens.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other further first hands, so I'll go back to councillor McQueen.
Well, thank you, madam warden, and I'm just communicating comments that have been made to me. Further from that situation, the individual that, and I'll tell you, if I have a loved one that's dying and I only have so much time to get there, I may speed as well. It's my choice, absolutely. But I have heard that that individual has got that ticket removed. But the point is, when there's a police officer that does pull you over, there is maybe some discretionary discussion around that. And with the tickets, there's no discretionary, it's get the ticket. Obviously, this individual did follow up and, and did. But I think in a sense of, from a public's perspective, it's maybe the public split on this. But I think in the sense that maybe to what councillor Dobrine has said, is it needs to be a rework and maybe use the tool specifically to what it's designed for and, and, you know, from that. But I'm just communicating comments that I have received.
Okay, thank you. Looking online, looking around the table, not seeing any other hands up for discussion. So I'll call the vote, all those in favor, and that motion is carried. Okay. We do not have any delegations this morning and I'm just going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask momentarily about which items may or may not be pulled from the consent agenda. We'll take it down to that point. I will then call a brief break. We do have, we do have a scheduled agenda, scheduled lunch at a certain time. So I'm just being conscious of that. So we'll have a little bit of an earlier but a shorter break because we will actually be calling for lunch prior to 12 o'clock. So with that then, I will move on to number five, which is a determination of items requiring separate discussion. There are only three listed in item six, six A, B and C. Are there any items that someone wishes to pull for further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up, that's excellent. So therefore, it's recommended that the following consent items, consent items be received and that staff be authorized to take the actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor Boddy, seconded by councillor Nielsen. It's now on the floor for discussion. Seeing no hands up, all those in favor, and that motion is carried. So that will mean that after a brief break, if we could try to be back by 11:10, that would be wonderful. We will pick up at item seven A when we return, thank you. All right. If I could invite our committee, the whole members back to the horseshoe. Okay, so we have our quorum here, so we will continue then with item seven A. And this is the first of our items for discussion. It is recommended that report PSRCW zero six twenty-five be received and that the DOM Construction Limited be awarded RFP PS zero four twenty-five design build for the new paramedic service base in Feverishen at a cost of two million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars excluding HST. And that the project be funded by Debenjer as approved in the twenty twenty-five Paramedic Services capital budget. And that council authorize staff to proceed with the preparations of CCDC fourteen, twenty thirteen design build stipulated price contract prior to formal council approval as per section twenty-six point six B of the procedural bylaw. May I ask for a mover? Okay, so we've got that moved by councillor Nielsen and seconded by councillor Pringle. It's uh, now on the floor for discussion. Welcome Director McNabb.
Morning, Warden County Council. Uh, happy to be here today to talk about the uh, new Feverisham base. Uh, with the comprehensive deployment review that we did in uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, that uh, review uh, was to address increased call volume across the county over the next ten years. And with that, we were uh, balancing out urban response times with rural response times, you know, at the same time addressing uh, increased call volume. A call volume is expected to go up sixty-eight percent over ten years. And uh, we need roughly about forty percent in resources to match that. So you can see the first cars that we added were in the one sound in Hanover where our more uh, urban areas are, where large volume of the calls are. But uh, part of the uh, deployment review was to recommend improved rural response times. And uh, so this is the first base that we're building in uh, Feverisham with approval. Uh, this area has been an underserviced area like compared to the other areas uh, that we've talked about before in the past. I believe uh, councillor McQueen, we've been talking this probably since about twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, that eventually that that would be a place that we would go to uh, build a base in that southeast corner of the county. That, that area right now is probably, I think, our closest base to the Feverisham area is twenty-one kilometers up to twenty-nine and Greg Lee. So this will definitely enhance that uh, response into that area. And again, that's balancing out, you know, the low call volume versus a, 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 a large area to cover. So the uh, the site that was chosen uh, was at the old Sandown at uh, four nine four seven forty, uh, Gray Road two. And uh, we are, we're at the final stages, I believe, of the land transfer now with Gray Highlands to the county. So while we did a design build, uh, a partial design build for mechanical electrical, we did a lot of the work as far as architectural, herself, Aaron, Whitney in-house. Great work that he does. Uh, and uh, we released the tender on August fifteenth and uh, we had the results back on September fifteenth. Uh, there was only one bidder, uh, was DOM Construction and uh, they, they met all the requirements of the bid. Our budget for this project was uh, one point six million. Uh, the bid costs from DOM come in over budget, and it two million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand or two million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand with HST. We're predicting uh, the, the uh, professional fees to be around two hundred thousand dollars. So that makes the total cost of the project two million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, which is an overage of uh, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. Uh, this project uh, will not be completed in twenty twenty-five, but if it's approved, it'll be moved over to the twenty twenty-six capital budget. So this project is uh, funded completely from Debenjer. The overage uh, uh, will result in a, in a dementia payment going from one hundred and fourteen thousand to one hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred, which is an increase of fifty-five thousand eight hundred. The budgets proposed for Aitken, Thornbury and Cobble Beach, I will also be updated uh, to match these new numbers. Thinking that this may be the realistic cost going forward for these additional bases. And I, I would like to mention also, and we've talked about that briefly before, but now more formal, we'll bring a report forward next week. Or sorry, next council, that uh, the Dundalk base, uh, we will have to build one there, uh, because the fire department needs the space. Then we'll have to find a new location for, for the Dundalk base. So this uh, part of these increases are offset by the grant around interest and uh, uh, for capital assets uh, from the government. When you look at our uh, annual increase to the comprehensive deployment plan, that's where we pay uh, the four hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. When we build in these extra costs to the bases, uh, that uh, increase goes up twenty-one thousand dollars, one hundred to four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars per year. So this just chart just shows the overage. Now we have talked with Dom, we have the ability to negotiate because there was only one bidder. And not included in this, we feel that we can find approximately two hundred thousand dollars in savings. Uh, just uh, some different things that Dom has suggested that we can do. And uh, we will continue to look for other cost savings as well as we uh, work through the project if this is approved. Uh, the base is being built to net zero. Uh, and it does meet the requirements of the county to continue to build in these net zero. If we, we look at Durham, uh, Durham, uh, if we add solar there, it'd be the same with Feverisham, uh, would be a net zero building. At this time, we don't have any additional funding uh, for the solar. So this is what the uh, base will look like and uh, we are going to be building again with approval. These same bases, hopefully that will save costs down the road. Uh, it's bait built for have two vehicles and the crew area for the ones that were able to make it to Durham will be similar to what the crew area is across the county.
Okay, thank you very much for that introduction and we'll put it out to committee, the whole members for questions. We'll begin with councillor McKay.
Yes, uh, thank you, Kevin. Uh, through you, Warden, I attended the open house in Durham. And uh, it was stated that it is the state of the art plus uh, it was the main headquarters for supplies. So these new ones that are being built, are they on a smaller dimension compared to the one in Durham? Or would you have another one somewhere for main supply station too?
Yeah, the one in Durham was meant to house the uh, our logistics and supplies for the county as well as our supervisor. So this uh, that base, uh, with that similar design, like layout, we will be cutting roughly a third of all these new bases. And that's roughly that extra portion that was meant for admin and logistics. That's the third. We did uh, change the orientation of the garage, so it's a true drive-through, so you're not always backing in. That was a suggestion from staff. It is, you know, you have this double stack base and you're always trying to move in front of another vehicle back in this way. It's a true drive-through. So that's about the only other difference as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll look around the room. We'll go to councillor Greg next.
Thank you. Uh, my first question is, can you expand upon what are the components that make up the two hundred thousand dollars in um, discretionary uh, cutbacks?
I don't have the list in front of me, but I can go from memory if that's okay, like the best. There was some contingency that we were able to reduce based upon our knowledge of what terms coming in that. I wish I had the numbers to say today, but when we did the planning for Durham. I think we did it really well and we were able, we didn't have to use that contingency as much as what we thought. There's some civil work and we're even looking at more now as far as engineering around stormwater management. And uh, we've uh, we don't believe that we'll need the curbing. Uh, we've reduced uh, um, concrete and uh, will change to tart to uh, asphalt. There is uh, reduced the flagpole, reduced the fence. Um, we, we talked about the building itself, about size and in talking with Dom is like obviously cut back size will cut back some costs, but really because you need those major components, doesn't really change a lot. So we, 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 we went down that road. But uh, yeah, we tried, tried to balance those as best we could. Again, these, these, those savings are not part of that total right now. Hopefully that will.
Thanks for that. So most of the savings are outside of the building envelope. E- effectively is from what I'm hearing and in, I don't, I've, I've got them wrote down here. I do have significant concerns here with um, before pro- professional fees. This is something that's thirty-four percent over budget. With professional fees, forty-nine percent over budget. And it would be more palatable to me if there was three or four bidders. Uh, but I am not comfortable in approving, uh, issuing a tender for, for this project when we're uh, effectively forty-nine percent over budget. We've got some room for cutbacks, but um, you know, thirty-four percent before professional fees, thirty-four percent with one tender. Um, I think we need to take another run at this uh, in the future and see uh, what type of competition in the marketplace. I, I think Kevin, you're, you and your team internally are doing a great job of looking at um, where can we shave off some savings? And we're, as councillor McKay indicated, um, they're a slightly reduced size from Durham. Uh, these bases going forward because it is a centralized place in, in Durham. But there's a, there's an element here that I'm concerned is just because it's Debenjer, uh, we should approve it. But it's, it's inflated perhaps because there's just not competition uh, right now that, that was bidding. Anytime that, and it was uh, deputy warden uh, Milne mentioned earlier, you know, it, it's not a sole source. Uh, but he had to ask for convincing um, information on a sole sourcing item. Um, one, one, one bidder is also somewhat concerning too. It's, it's always great to see competition. Um, that's transparently placed in front of uh, council and, and the public. Um, so uh, at this time, I, my biggest concern is, is that there is one bidder, uh, they do great work. However, uh, I think we should uh, uh, go back out in the future and see what kind of um, engagement we do get from the, from the public sector, from the private sector again in terms of interest and, and trying to shave down the, the overall, uh, overall cost of the project.
Director McNabb, did you want to comment or any director Spicer or anyone else?
The uh, budget amount of one point six was a calculation that we utilized by looking at other builds and price per square foot. And uh, that, that's one thing that maybe I take responsibility for is that uh, maybe that was lower than what we probably should have to begin with. That's, that's one segment of that. And that may be some of the discrepancy in the prices.
I'll just let director Spicer come to the lectern.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Um, I, I can understand and appreciate uh, councillor Greg's point as far as having one bid. Um, it was publicly advertised. Um, it was publicly advertised and we can't control who bids or who doesn't. My concern would be we've now got a a bid that has been publicly disclosed. You would have to um wait for some period of time before you would go back out because I'd be con- concerned that somebody would say that now we're bid shopping. And we've disclosed um Dom's bid.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, there's a, I'll take that as a follow, I'm going to take a follow-up from Counselor Greg on the same topic and then I'm going to go over to Counselor McQueen next.
And and thank you. And I just want to be um uh you don't need to take responsibility at all it because it's nothing to to your work in preparing the document. I'm just commenting on the fact that you don't have anything that's um coming in to be able to compare the one bid to. So I just, when you said I'll take responsibility for that, I thought, no, you don't have to take responsibility for anything because there is no fault um to be found with with anyone here. It's just the discomfort with with not having comparable. So thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. And I I just want to, I already had in the queue actually virtually uh Counselor Borden, I was going to speak first and then I'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden, through you um to County Council. Good morning again. Um, I've less less concerns about the one bid only because they don't, at the time when they're bidding, they don't know how many bids are going to be coming in. So there could be ten, the 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 winning proponent does not know that. So that that's less of a concern to me. Um, the one concern of any delay that we do, we know the construction costs more money. So if we delay any further, um, we've seen time and time again with with builds, with roads, um, each month, each quarter, each year will exponentially add to the cost of the same thing. Um, my question is, um, I'm just reading the, you're asking counsel for two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, the expected cost is two, three, nine, two, nine hundred. It's saying that will be a savings of two hundred dollars, but that's not reflected in the chart. So just for clarity purposes, is that the reason why uh the committee is being asked for two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand um as opposed to two, three, nine, two, nine hundred, just for clarity purposes through the uh the warden?
Yeah, yeah, today is the award is to Dom for two million one hundred and ninety-two thousand, but also bringing forward that the project we're expecting to be professional fees two hundred thousand. Again, that doesn't include any savings that we can uh work out with them. So that the award today is for Dom of two million one hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Okay, is there any follow-up to that? Uh, Counselor Borden?
Um, yes, Ma- Madam Warren, just so just as a follow-up, so but we're being asked for two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, so where where would the reflection of the savings be at the end of the day? If there is any of the two hundred thousand.
Okay, we'll just give a moment for Director Spicer and Director McNab to come forward with their response to that.
Through you, Madam Warden, uh to respond to Counselor Borden Yon's question. Uh, what you're being asked for is to approve the award of two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand. And so that the chart that you've seen on page three of the report, the expected costs include the non-rebatable H S T. And if we find the savings that uh Director McNab has identified, those would be um in the form of negative change orders that would reduce the total value of the contract. But the award today would be the two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand excluding H S T.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. A couple of things. Uh, start off with the county council is wanting to pay two dollars for the land. Um, so I think just going back to uh uh Council Burganoff with regards to process, I think we have to protect our process. Because I think in fairness to uh Dome Construction, which has been in business for a long time. They've been doing a lot of municipal buildings, a lot of buildings. So I don't think there's any debate of their quality of work. Uh, you know, they had no indication or knowledge that they're they're only sold bit bitter until so it comes out. So I don't think there's any fault of anybody there. Obviously, it's it's unfortunate that it's higher than what was budgeted, but I think we look at the last couple of years, construction costs are continuing to rise and everything else. You know, just go to Home Depot and buy something that you bought two years ago and everything's out. The other thing I want to say is, yes, uh, what Kevin made a comment was this area, you know, has been an underserviced area and and I did raise it and then we had a, we had a uh a company that did the study and showed improved that it was an underserviced area. I know a number of years back, there was a young man that uh was badly injured and I know for the area with regards to either Thornbury, Markville or Dundalk. Time is of the essence when when somebody is seriously injured and unfortunately he lost his life and not saying it's any fault of anybody, but there was a bit of a delay getting there. Just getting to serve to serve that individual. And I remember the uh uh conversation about that with an individual and, you know, it's too bad, but obviously the study showed that it was an underserviced area and traffic and everything in that area has grown, you know, with the growth of Blue Mountains and everything else, Gray Road two, thirty-one, thirty-four, at one twenty-four, you know, it's just the the traffic patterns have changed. And it's just more and more people that's traveling through the area. So I think the justification is there. It's just unfortunate. It's a little higher than we are, but I I don't I don't think we can wait. I think we need to move forward. The other comment I do have for you, Kevin, is if there is a need, like just like the Dundalk uh building where they 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 need it for expanding their fire hall, can this building be added to an extra bay? Is it designed that way? Is there a possibility that somewhere down the future, just like the situation you you mentioned in in Dundalk? It it is, is, I guess anything can be added to, but is there any any incorporation of that ever being incorporated into this building?
I I also don't have the information I can answer that. I would think you could be able to add beside it, but it also meets on size of land and those type of things, but I I also don't have enough expertise. I'd have to ask Aaron, who's probably the best person to ask.
I only ask it because somebody asked me to ask that question because that was a thought that somebody made to me. So I was asking the question.
Okay, thank you. So uh as we focus in on our discussion on the question that's at hand here, we'll go to the Deputy Warden next.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Kevin, for the report. Um, in there, you mentioned that this building and the Durham one indeed as well uh will be net zero ready. I'm wondering how much that cost adds to the bill? Because um I can appreciate that we want to reduce our energy consumption. And the thought is we could put solar panels on at a future date, but I think the reality is most builds don't have that done. You either put them on when you're building the thing or it doesn't happen. It's like adding bays to it later. Not likely going to happen. And as time goes on, it becomes less cost efficient to add new stuff to an old building. So I'm just wondering, is there a potential, if we're not going to put the panels on now, would there be some savings in not allowing the building to do that in the near future, please?
Yes, that is something we could look at. One thing that we were uh wanting to do and we're still working through is uh looking for grants to uh to for these uh net zero initiatives, that that would cover the costs. Uh, solar for Durham, I believe, was two hundred and twenty-five thousand that, you know, we'd be able to get a grant. Hopefully, let someday that working through that work to be able to get the to get a tool in as well. But it it is it something that could be taken out? We could, like, I think that's something we look at. There's like EV chargers and uh I guess you're looking at heat pumps and stuff like that and types of windows and wall thickness and.
Okay, thank you. Looking around the room, I don't see any further hands up nor online. Okay, I think we're ready to call that question then. All those in favor? Okay, and that motion is carried. Thank you. All right, so Director McNab, don't go far. We'll have a look at number seven B here. It's uh recommended uh that report P S R C W zero seven twenty-five being a report on additional funding to support SOS and extended services be received and that the funds be flowed to partner agencies as outlined in the funding agreement that ends March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Dickert, seconded by the Deputy Warden. It's now on the floor for discussion and Director McNab, over to you.
Okay, happy to be here to talk about this this morning. You remember earlier this year, uh, we were approved for funding to uh increase our response to the opioid crisis. And uh we were able to move our support outreach services uh to seven days a week, which we're still, you know, working through that and getting the staffing up to date to do that. But also increasing the resources to be able to uh respond to that emergency. Uh, part of the work that we're doing, we were asked about uh doing additional work again to target, you know, the overdose crisis. So uh we did put in for additional funding uh on top of what we've already received. Uh, this would to further support initiatives within the county. Uh, what it will do is uh support a navigator uh program in in the city of Owen Sound uh to have two navigators on seven days a week to support people. Uh, it also is to support treatments uh space uh at Safe and Sound for SOS. It'll give us ability to have some administrative uh support uh for the team. Uh, the team's growing, uh to be able to dedicate it as opposed to being off the side of someone's desk. And also uh be able to uh increase the number of fair amount of basic needs to people uh to be able to circulate that. So this is a hundred percent uh funded uh through this uh funding grant and uh it will go until uh March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so we do have it out open for discussion. Any discussion? Okay, so we're going to begin with Counselor Greg, then go to Counselor Eccles.
Thank you. Through the warden, uh, two key questions, Kevin. Um, some of the um, I'm certainly aware within Owen Sound of some of the concerns of of the business community in in terms of individuals. Uh, particularly at the start of the day in front of businesses and and the social navigators here spoken to um in in the report will support that. Um, if could you expand more so in terms of what that, what their job would look like uh beyond that? Because upfront, that's the most familiarity is to the pressing need is businesses like, we need support. Um, first thing in the morning to be able to to open our doors. Once the day starts, the day is different than first thing in the morning. And also, could you expand on what ninety-four thousand dollars uh in material supplies, equipment uh looks like? Uh, what is that? Uh, because this is just uh till March, so I guess effectively five, five months. So, thanks.
Yes, so the navigators, the the main role of that is to help the people that are uh that are unhoused. Pretty members that uh need support in the community. So they would be working with them, not just in the morning, but all day long, to be able to connect them to supports and uh to uh, you know, meet their needs. Also, the big thing would be doing referrals. But they could do a number of different things. They could do sharps cleanup. They can, uh, if there was items left, they can uh work with that. Again, the the big thing is helping those community members, which ultimately we help them, that helps everybody. And uh so that's that's the main plan of this. Th- this is something that's been proposed by at least two agencies before. It's more like it's a trial, see how it goes. So I think it's a good opportunity to have funding to be able to do that and see what those outcomes are like. The basic needs, it could be from clothes, right? We're getting waterproof boots. Uh, we've seen a lot of medical concerns around wet feet, the people that live outside, that they don't have waterproof boots. Significant money around that, coats, uh, food. There are some uh, you know, uh, us as far as like, but there's supplies uh in that is um uh, there's uh food, uh, part of that, there's tents. Um, sleeping bags that for people that are living outside, we'll to to that. So yeah, there's a number of items, a whole list. And uh we have to spend it by then and we'll do our best to distribute it, but uh, you know, obviously we will ensure it goes. You know, it may be not handed by March, but we'll have it and it'll ultimately be able to be carried on on that. Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you for expanding on that, Kevin. I'm glad to hear um about the additional help in the community in terms of just cleanup. Um, just a week ago, Saturday, um, I was through the Julie MacArthur Rec Center and there's individuals doing drugs in the community at the skateboard park. Um, that's not a very welcoming um scene for people that want to have fun outdoors. Um, through uh in great weather at the skateboard park. Um, and it's a, it's been a certainly a drain, a huge drain on city staff for for several years as they try to respond to these ongoing items twenty-four hours a day. And and that's uh an instance that just shines light on what kind of challenges uh exist in the community from from some of the behaviors there. So thanks, uh, good to hear. Uh, that kind of support is also something that this this will complement.
Thanks. We'll go to Counselor Eccles.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It's through you. There's no doubt there's a need in our community for this opioid crisis. My fear is one that's shared maybe with this council a couple of times and continually for a number of years. Here we have funding, federal funding coming at a hundred percent for six months for us to expand our SOS program. Is this a healthcare issue? In my mind, yes, it is. Property tax, supposed to look after healthcare. How much downloading is this? Great, we're getting into it for six months. Six years from now, council around here, which I may be here, I may not be here, be able to express to them. How did we get to this? We're spending eight and a half million dollars. We've had to delay building ambulance base because we haven't got any money because our paramedics are running around doing healthcare issues. It, it's a slippery slope. It's one that I we need it, but do we need those that are supposed to be looking after this? It's the guaranteed funding. I guess we're probably the best, our paramedics, to deliver the service. And I don't think there's any question to that. But how much can we deliver and take as a download from the province? From the feds to keep doing their job to the taxpayer. Maybe we should go to the feds and to Doug Ford and say, we need more of those that are breaking the law by speeding so that we can have the funds to be able to do their job. That was a little bit in jest. But the idea of this being a six-month hundred percent funded, once we're into it, it's going to be very hard to get out of it. Extremely hard to get out of it. And then it falls to the property taxpayers to support. That's my fear. I will be supporting it at this point in time. But it's one thing to look down. We've got to keep the pressure on. Who should be looking after it? We're delivering a service. We're not building a service.
Okay, thank you, Director McNab. Did you want to comment or?
Yeah, I don't disagree. This is health, but it's also social services as well. I was the first. Social support means a lot. Like if we can't support people in housing and social services, a lot of the work we do in health really doesn't add up and uh so it's tackling that. Th- this really, to tell you the truth, a lot of these enhancements, paramedic services is only one small piece of pie. Uh, we work with partners, uh, CMHA, Bright Shores, um, and the United Way, Safe and Sound. We work with public health and there's twenty-five partners beyond that. This is something that's very complex and requires a lot of agencies to to address. Uh, this funding uh will go till, this specific funding goes to March thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-six. But uh we do have funding for seven days a week until mid-January, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, so it does, it is longer. And uh our SOS funding, uh, we've been fortunate, that is permanent funding, that is base funding, that's not, it's a hundred percent funded by the province. Uh, so that is something that even without this, we'll still have that program, the core. of four days a week with our paramedic nurse practitioner, mental health counselors and social navigator, that that is ongoing funding. Considered base. These these have just been in addition to.
Through you, Warden, and further to Director McNabb indicated earlier that this this is a trial to see if some of these these measures can 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 work. I think that'll hopefully provide us, if it's successful, it provides us with some further evidence to be able to go to the provincial and federal government to say that we need some sustained funding in order to keep these programs going. So I think I think that's something that's just to keep in mind, I guess, in terms of it is it is on a trial basis to to test this out. We think this will be very successful, but we'll be able to have that evidence and true data to be able to report back to the province and federal government to say we need sustained funding to keep this going.
Okay, we'll go to councillor Dobrine and then to councillor Body.
Thank you. And through you, Warden Matrasov. To that point, with regard to collecting the data to support ongoing the ongoing service, would we have sufficient indication by Roma that would allow us to have a delegation at that point in time or consider a delegation to present some of the preliminary findings? Because if the funding is going to expire in March, then what? We could maybe provide the data and the pilot could be extended or, you know, more permanent funding. It's perhaps not an answer we can arrive at today, but something to consider.
Through you, Warden. Thank you for that question, councillor Dobrine. As part of the initial funding that we received from the federal government was to fund a point two five or part time data analyst to help track and and report on some of this data. Whether or not we'll have enough results pre-Roma for for this particular piece will be a bit of a question mark, but hopefully we'll have at least at least some initial results that may inform a delegation brief if that's where council wants to consider that. Those those delegation requests are will likely be discussed by council usually in November. So we're already tracking a list of of potential delegation requests based on council's discussions. This is one that we can potentially add to that list and see what data and information that we have at that time to be able to go forward to Roma.
Councillor Body?
I don't know where to begin. Clearly, there's people that are homeless. Clearly, there's people that have mental health and and drug addictions. And clearly, they're coming from all over Gray County, mostly to One Sound and to Hanover where they're most visible because we have the services that are here. I've said it in this circle before, but Gray County is kicking the living crap out of every other municipality in Ontario with these types of programs. But yet my telephone lights up at City Hall telling me that we're not doing anything. I've got a ten thousand word essay that I send out to people and of course, I don't get a thanks for it after they just disappeared. The last phone call I got was a complaint about somebody homeless on an electric bicycle between Fenton and Park Street, which is in Georgian Bluffs. They didn't leave a name, so I couldn't even tell them to phone Sue. I really wish that Gray County would start blasting communications out and how well we're doing and all the things that are going on. We've said this before, but we're not taking credit for our achievements. People in Owen Sound don't stick their head above the top of the hill to see which way the wind's blowing half the time. And they don't go to Ottawa, they don't go to Berry, they don't go to Sudbury, they don't go to Guelph, they don't go to London, they don't go to these other places. And we are doing extremely well in this community. We have very few people, frankly, per capita that have problems on the street. Yes, they're there. I grew up in a family that had a men's clothing store on Main Street that started six years before I was born and we closed it down about one year before I started practicing law in downtown Owen Sound. So pretty well my entire life, I've been in business in downtown Owen Sound. I remember alcoholics that were on the street. I was talking to Louis Guevaris the other day. We're naming them. There has always been people on the street. One Frankie that used to put a window through a bricks, Briggs Jewelry Store, no, the other one, someone else's jewelry store. Every November when it got cold, so he'd get sentenced until the spring and then be back out. We're doing extremely well. We're never going to eradicate homelessness, mental health or addictions. It has worsened since COVID. We're doing extremely well in Gray County and we need to take credit for that. And we need to start communicating that more so that people understand all the programs that are going into this. And this one being another trial that hopefully works. People will find that little thing that isn't working perfectly and criticize it, but overall, we're doing extremely well and I think we need to toot toot the horn. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And with that, I don't see any further hands up for discussions, so I'm going to call call this question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Director McNabb. So what I would like to do is I would like to introduce the next item and Madam Clerk will have the honorary position of just before lunch, Director Taylor will have to share on this day. So it is recommended that Gray County, that the Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting minutes dated September eighteenth, twenty twenty five be adopted as presented. And the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. There are six items that are there that have been published and the minutes have been circulated duly and are printed here on the agenda. So with that, I will ask for a mover and a seconder. Moved by councillor Greg, seconded by councillor Dobrine. It's now on the floor for discussion, Madam Clerk.
Thank you and good morning, County Council. The Gray County Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee met on September eighteenth to discuss a number of items. The first one up was a report from Gray County on the Accessibility Compliance Report, which has been submitted to or will be submitted to the Ministry of Seniors and Accessibility. It's a requirement to be submitted every two years. And it's a self-assessment exercise that Gray County will undertake to look at its status of compliance with accessibility requirements. The assessment asks questions around compliance with employment standards, transportation standards, information and communication standards, design of public spaces and customer service. The second report was another report from Gray County regarding the reconstruction of Gray Road twelve in Markdale. And the report was seeking the feedback from the committee on pedestrian facilities and rest areas along this portion of the road between Wellington Ave and Terra Drive. Staff note, there will be drop curbs and tactile plates at the crossings. There were questions addressed regarding the elevation of the retaining wall and nearby surroundings in order to determine the need for rest areas along that portion. And discussion about whether there should be one in front of the church or the trail parking lot. But overall, I think there was general consensus that there should be a rest area along that section. The next report was from Long Term Care for the renovation taking place at Gray Gables in the Kids in Us space. They are, Kids in Us is undertaking the renovation in the building and the project was brought brought forward for review and comment. So there has been consideration given to sufficient turning radius in the vestibule, appropriate door sizes and widths and minimizations of instructions and the design of an accessible washroom and then new lighting being incorporated in as well. There were also comments shared on the importance of accessibility of the components within the washroom in addition to just the general design of the washroom itself. The next item was the Westbury Multiyear Accessibility Plan. It is a brand new plan as the past one has just expired, I believe, last year. And it considered review of policies, customer service and accessibility procurement. The staff and attendants spoke to the accessible features appearing on the website and also noting their wish to hear from the public on any opportunities to hear to hear opportunities to improve accessibility standards in the municipality. And that was the summary of that meeting. Happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding these minutes? We'll go to councillor Greg.
And just a comment, but the Gray Road twelve project is a good example. This is a really good committee that did a really good job of finding the sweet spot in terms of the rest area discussion and trying to position the project to suit the needs now and in the future. But avoiding the overbuilt aspect because you can overbuild and you can underbuild. But certainly just my compliments to the committee at finding that what I think is really just the right sweet spot in that balance. So they had really good discussion and and just good to see all the various considerations in the recommendation. Thanks, Tara.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, not seeing any then. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us just up to noon then. So if we could. Okay, well, I've just received word that we can go a little bit longer. We have one that will be item seven D then. It's recommended that the Budget and Finance Committee meeting minutes dated September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five be adopted as presented and the following resolutions be contain contained therein be endorsed. I will not read out the eight items because they have been circulated and they have been circulated both in the minutes and on the agenda. But I will look for a mover and a seconder so that we can begin discussion. Moved by councillor Carlton, seconded by councillor Keveney. And it's on the floor for discussion. Welcome back to the lectern and director Spicer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. The Budget and Finance Committee met on September twenty fourth. We had a number of things on the agenda. The first was a capital presentation by Long Term Care. And Director Cornell presented, and this was the final presentation from the the departments with significant capital budgets. She spoke about that they rely heavily on their building condition assessment reports to develop their capital budget program. And highlighted that there is a source of funding from the province for comprehensive minor capital. It helps with minor repairs and upkeep of the home and we've been utilizing that fund to offset some of the costs for planned work that normally would come from their respective reserves. We then talked about the twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven Budget Assumptions and Timelines Report and talked about the timeline where departments, finance and are reviewing draft budgets with the CAO and Deputy CAO. That's ongoing and finishes up next Wednesday. We talked about at the October twenty ninth Budget and Finance Committee, there'll be a high level overview and to discuss capital projects. And then to the review of the draft budget, November twenty sixth, in advance of committee of the whole meetings, December fifth and twelfth. Then we followed up with Deputy CAO provided a report on twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven staffing requests. And there were a number of requests put forward. They were discussed and they are summarized in the motion. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you for that introduction then. And with that, we will put it out on the floor for questions and comments. This, of course, is just the preamble that will lead us up to our greater discussion days when we get to the actual draft budget. Not seeing any hands go up nor online. So I think you've answered any questions that may be there with the material that was presented through the minutes. I'll call the question then, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you. I'll just look for the moment to the clerks. Okay, so I have received word that lunch has arrived. It is a hot lunch. We do have two more items to discuss. That includes the one item that's in closed session. So I'm looking for consensus that we break for lunch at this point in time. Yes, I'm seeing that. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to break for lunch at this time, then we will come back to item seven E and then go into closed session. And let's break until, if we could come back at quarter two to twelve forty five, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we are back from our break and we are moving on with item seven E. It's recommended that the Joint Municipal Services Committee meeting minutes dated September 26, 2025 be adopted as presented and the following resolutions contain contain therein be endorsed. There are seven of them listed that have been published and circulated both in the minutes and on the agenda. So I will look for a mover in a seconder. Moved by councillor Eccles, seconded by councillor Pringle. So it's now on the floor for discussion. And welcome to the lecturing this afternoon, Deputy C A O.
Oh, I don't know whether speaking before lunch or after lunch is worse. There's a big green sticker that tells me which button to press and apparently I didn't clue onto that was pressing the wrong one, but there we go. Good afternoon and through you, through you, Warden. Thank you very much. I'm going to give a very quick update of the the last Joint Municipal Services Committee meeting. We met and discussed the priorities that had been ranked by the committee through its first meeting. And talked about next steps that we're we've we've managed to sort of plot out for a course of action on those areas. So I'll go quickly through them. The first one was waste management, which is a service which is delivered by member municipalities and has been a subject of conversation around this horseshoe a number of times over the years. And through the Joint Municipal Services Committee, there was interest expressed in looking at considering closer ways of working across the county with with the potential ultimately that the that services could be partially or fully altered in their service delivery mechanism to potentially a county, a county-led, a county-led model. So there has been a very successful community of practice meeting over the last two years, a year and a half, discussing the ways in which we deliver services, the similarities that exist between municipalities and the differences that we currently have across the landscape of waste management and waste collection services in the county. So we have a fairly good understanding of what's what's happening out there. The next step in that process, we believe and we're recommending is to undertake a regional waste management strategy. It would look at all the services that are currently being provided and how they're being provided. It would look at the ways in which those services are being provided in other communities and different models that have been applied in those communities and different ways in which those services could be delivered in the future, which may realize efficiencies, cost savings and service level enhancements to community groups. And so coming from that meeting, if endorsed by council to committee today and council in a couple of weeks' time, there would be a budget request you would see in front of you as part of the 2026 budget to put $250,000 to one side to engage a consultant to undertake that regional waste review. Now, the second of the areas we spent some time talking about were staffing and H R services. We talked a lot as a committee about similarities that exist between the member municipalities and the county across Gray and some of the ways in which we we could look at ways of closer alignment. Again, there is a an effective working group of H R managers and H R professionals that already collaborate informally across the county. And so really what we're recommending at this point is formalizing that process a little bit more and taking first steps towards looking at how we could deliver a joint training program, more joined up delivery of training. Our our staff in both Gray County and across member municipalities are undertaking very similar trainings in areas such as operations, in health and safety, in H R. And so there are some, there are some easy wins in terms of aligning and closer alignment of those training courses. We also talked about some of the would have been termed softer skills around finding efficiencies. So lean type training, project management training, change management training, and how they could be delivered in a different way. And so we're going to take first steps. We're advising that we take first steps towards a collective, collective approach to training, a more collective approach and collaborative approach to training in future years. It's fair to say that that conversation went a lot further than training. We explored all kinds of different areas where human resource services, training services and other other areas around the staffing, retention and recruitment side could be further further merged or further shared between municipalities. But we felt that this would be the first, first good step coming out from that committee discussion. The last area, and I know this is an area close to, close to many of your hearts, was around healthcare and physician recruitment, which was, which was a topic that had been raised at the first one and given some degree of prioritization. We've not been able to do a great deal in terms of what that would look like in respect of future actions between the first municipal service committee and the second one. What we have managed to do is meet with the O H T locally, Gray Bruce O H T, have a conversation with them in regards to their work and and what that looks like locally. And to start to build a, build an understanding of whether the great, whether Gray County could add value in support of the conversations around healthcare and physician recruitment. We understand that that's a field where there's many, many hands already involved. And so the first step we wanted to make sure of is that we wouldn't further muddy waters and in fact could be a clarifying influence rather than a muddying influence. And and by all partners, it would appear that there is a role that the county could, could play. And so again, with the the support and endorsement of council, our work would be to now sit down further with people that have been involved, both from a municipal perspective in the past, as well as O H T, to try and clarify what the Gray County role would be. So as with the first meeting, it was a great, great collaborative discussion. Identified a lot of opportunities that we can explore and and so I'm happy to take any questions that might follow along from that.
Thank you very much for that introduction. So we'll put it out for county council for comments and questions. We'll start with the deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you now for the report. Are the items on here in order of priority or are they simply there as the course of the meeting, the conversation took place?
So through you, Madam Warden, good question. I can't remember would be the answer. So we did a we did a prioritization exercise in the first meeting. Where we really left that was just identifying the top three. So we had, I think there were 11 items on that list. And I think we're going to work on all 11 over time. So the other, the other eight or so of my masses serving me correctly have not been forgotten about. But there's no particular order in terms of the way in which we we put them into the report now.
Okay, other questions, comments? We'll go to councillor Greg.
Two questions. I guess the first one's a very quick question. I was surprised to see be directed to collate a library, but I surprised to see of H R policies after the library. I just wonder, is library something that the committee has gotten that plan of 11 items? Have they went there in any of the discussion? Is there future discussion forthcoming on it? And the second question is a little bit more information on the regional waste management plan, like I've heard some discuss the idea of working together to secure like one vendor. But you have to be careful for what you wish for because right now there's a couple players in the marketplace and that's a good thing. If you were to advance towards one particular vendor for your whole area, in 10 years, you might come to to regret that decision. So I'm just wondering, at this point, what type of outcomes is the committee envisioning?
So through you, Madam Warden. To the first question, library has been discussed in the past. Library as a Gray County service is not one of the ones that came up on this list. So so the use of the word library in this particular instance was specific to the H R policy realm of things rather than a more generic approach. In in regards to waste management, I think, I think the the concept here is it's far too early to say what that could look like. So the the nature of the landscape has shifted significantly. If if you roll back one or two contracts ago, there was a great deal more diversity in that marketplace than there is today. And you're quite correct. There are, there are two local players and one local player has achieved significantly more footprint over the last few years due to some provincial changes than than the other one. So so we're already seeing that market shift quite significantly. And so I think part of the work of the regional waste management strategy is to look to see how that we could, we could use that changing landscape to our advantage. Are there advantages that we could explore? And it could well be that at the end of that, it's it's status quo or it is rolling up some services. So for example, if you go next door to Bruce County, they've rolled up household hazardous waste collection to a county level, but they've left curbside collection to to member municipal level. So there's, there's no one size fits all. And I think the the idea behind undertaking this next step in terms of looking at a strategy is to see where there are some opportunities. And so, you know, another example of that is we have varying different capacities across Gray County in terms of landfill. We have varying different capacities in terms of how we deal with organic waste. And so I know that our colleagues in Southgate are processing their own organic waste on site, in fact, doing so in a way with capacity that could be shared. And so are there, there are other efficiencies we can find within that aren't going to necessarily cost any of us anymore. And so I think that would be the next step.
Okay, we'll go to councillor Dobree.
I'll reserve that comment. I was thinking of something, but I won't do that. How did you arrive at a consulting fee of $250,000, quarter of a million dollars to evaluate the potential for a regional waste management system? My gut reaction is that it's somewhat wasteful. Thank you. Pun intended. And yeah, so that aspect of it. And yes, Southgate has a very forward-thinking waste diversion program for some 23 years. And the organics does have capacity. We are non-unionized. And having come from a city where they convert the waste management system to, you know, private sector and one side of the highway gets waste pickup and the other one's on strike. So I would have, I have concerns about it. If I recall, this was looked at not too long ago, like not too many years ago, maybe before to 2020. Would we not look at that study first and see what the results were or why we didn't, it wasn't pursued at that time? Thank you.
So I might rely on the the C A O to help me out on this one, but to get started and through you, Madam Warden. So the the work that was done in 2020 was initiated by a request from member municipalities to have a look at this. And indeed, we did take some steps towards that, but we never actually completed the study. There was, there were some funding challenges and there was certainly a pressure of time back in 2020 on getting this one done to the clients of the study. So it didn't actually happen. So so we aren't repeating work that has been done. We're really coming back to work that had already been requested to be done that we haven't yet managed to get to. So so there's that piece. To the, to the the value of this work, we've, we've taken that value base from some of that initial work that was done in 2020 to scope out what this could look like. And and obviously built a little bit of a buffer in because we are now four or five years after that. We've also looked at some of the work that's been done in neighbouring counties. So Simco's done similar work and Bruce County's done similar work. And these are the sorts of values that they've been getting back in terms of the consulting costs associated for doing a body of work, which is, which is essentially looking at at 10 organizations and how they organize waste and manage waste, looking at the provincial landscape for that and then trying to map out what would happen. So it's a fairly significant body of work, as always. And I know I'm gonna, I'm stood up here and my colleagues will say the same thing. My hope would be is that as an upper limit and not a limit that we're aiming to get to. But based on those, the the look on the landscape, that's roughly what these pieces of work are costing.
So should this be approved with an upset limit of 250,000? The R F P would go out and we would still have an opportunity to yea or nay the decision to award the consulting tender?
So through you, Madam Warden, absolutely. So we're not actually looking for approval right now to even get started on this work. That would be something which will come through the budget process. So if this is approved through the budget process, the, the, the hope would be to write collectively an R F P scope of works that would be done through that community of practice, through the C A O group and through the Joint Municipal Services Group. That would then go out to market to be bid on and it would come back through the traditional procurement channels for council's approval.
Just further to Deputy C O Lobley's comments. As, as Niall has indicated, the you know, the the step today would be to include this as part of the budget. So that'd be part of the budget considerations. We are proposing to fund that from both a waste manager reserve and a one-time funding reserve combination in order to fund that project. As now correctly indicated, just past COVID, there was a motion that was put forward by a municipality that to look into this. At that time, there was provincial funding through the municipal modernization funding. There was tight timelines and we asked for an extension to that timeline. Unfortunately, that extension was not provided. And therefore, we felt that given the comprehensiveness of this study and the length of time it likely will take, we just couldn't meet that timeline at that time. So therefore, that's why that project didn't proceed then. We have since then have had several meetings with waste management staff from the various municipalities. We've called it the Waste Manager Community Practice. We've collected some data and information as part of those discussions. So we think we're at a good starting point. Well, of course, include that information as part of the R F P document. And like Niall said, we're hoping this is an upper limit. We hope we've been able to collect some of that information to maybe help cut some of those costs, so to speak, initially, because that would have been required anyways as part of that initial first step for that study. But we've already done some of that base work to help inform the study. So so I think we're at a good starting point with it and hopefully we'll get some costs. That 250 was what we proposed, what was the estimate back in 2021, we were considering this study back then.
And you just reminded me of one more thing is that with producer responsibility, the recycling component of that landscape may have changed for all of our municipalities, which kind of throws a wrinkle into the information that might have been collected five years ago.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go to councillor Eccles next.
$250,000, is that going to be the finding fee? To find that study that was done in 1994 on waste management at a county level? How much? I mean, we've been down this path before and I'm not going to dwell on it, but we've got studies upon studies on how the county can get into waste management. And now we're going to do another one? Or proposed? And I'm just, this isn't towards you, Deputy CEO, this is, this is this committee letting us come forward. I'd have a hard time, a very hard time supporting this in a budget. I'll just put that upfront. That's all. And for anybody's 1994, there was a study done by the county on all how the county could do waste management. I have seen it. It's sitting someplace in the vault, Randy. Was it a million? I thought it was a million two, but yeah, it was well over a million dollars that that study cost at that time. And it was fully funded by the province. So anyways, just saying that there is one out there.
The C A O would like to respond.
Thank you. Through you, Warden. Councillor Eccles is correct. There was a study that was done in early 90s for sure. And in terms of looking at waste management, I think at that time, it was scoped in terms of looking at a potential expansion of an existing landfill at that time, and whether or not that could serve a wider area in terms of landfill capacity. As Nile indicated, the landscape has significantly changed on the wayside. As councillor Dobree just indicated, the recycling aspects have significantly changed or continue to change even month to month, it seems. So, so we think that although there was a previous study that was completed, and again, some of that will help inform some background information that we can provide to the consultants who hopefully keep the cost down as low as we can. But we think there's merit to exploring this based on some of the conversations again that we've had collectively through that community practice. And and to at least see if there's opportunities and whether or not it's across a wide spectrum of just working together on promotional materials and helping to to educate and 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 be aware of all the changing, changes that are occurring and sharing some of those, those communications and services rates rate to potentially the county then assuming waste management and lots of stuff in between there. So we think there's a number of options that can be explored. Obviously, doing that cost benefit analysis to see what makes the most sense or what might make the most sense. And then, of course, bringing that back to council and the respective member municipal councils for consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'll look around the room. We'll go to councillor Kentner next.
Thank you. And through you, Warden Matrasovs. I, I think that all of our, all of us in the first tiers are going through a process right now where we are trying to get to our first budget meeting without having to start at six or seven percent because of pre approvals. And to me, this, the, the waste management problem sounds a lot like the housing problem. Is there a jurisdiction anywhere that has solved it? On either side of the border, for that matter. Like, I, I think we're, should really think hard about this quarter million because every four times you spend it, you're down a million. I, I just, I just, I know where those of us who are speaking this way are treading where angels fear to, but honestly, I think we have we can gather on our own all the information we need to know how we can deal with, with it more effectively in Gray County. And then we can talk to Bruce County and Simcoe County and Dufferin County and Wellington County. Is there a firm out there that we know actually specializes in presenting a plan that will be so much more effective than what we're doing now? Those are my points. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Do you, do you want?
Just to the latter question in terms of whether or there's, there's firms that specialize in this area. Yes. There's several firms that that we're aware of that have, again, other neighboring counties have utilized in the past to do a similar study. So we know that there's, there's, there's firms out there that specialize in this area. And yeah, and so just leave it there.
Okay, we'll go to councillor Boddy.
Just to respond to some of the concerns, changes are coming pretty quickly in this, in this area. I, I know Meaford got a contract recently for garbage removal a couple of years ago, but they got whacked. And at that point, they're saying, we need help. We need to think, think bigger. Blue Box has changed since 1994. I don't know, was there there's probably people around the table that weren't born then. Oh, sorry, sorry, Dana, I was talking about you, but there, there's something like only 10 years left in a lot of landfill sites in Ontario. When that demand changes, you know, the demand stays the same, the supply comes down, economics, the cost is going up. And we need to start looking ahead 10 years from now, not looking at the next election, frankly. And moving ahead and figuring out how we can do this. At some point, there's potentially nine municipalities that are going to be looking at spending $250,000 on a consultant's report if we don't get our act together and try and do it as one and move the ball forward in behalf of all of us and and start looking at it now. The last report, I think you said was 2000 or 2020, that the last time we looked at it, we didn't get the funding to do the report. And I know Al Barfett was around at the time because I can picture him out at where we were at the time having the discussion. That's five years that have gone by already. So double that by two and all of a sudden we're in trouble. So we need to start thinking ahead. And that was the whole thought in the discussion at the committee is each of us has individual contracts, each of us has different landfill abilities, but at some point, we're all going to get whacked. So we'd be better to put our heads together, move the ball forward and be ready when, when we do get whacked. So that was the thinking and why we're looking at trying to plan ahead and spend a little bit of money now. Thanks.
Okay, we'll go over to councillor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and good discussion. And I know years we did have discussion about a regional approach. I know with us of Great Highlands, we went into a contract with the first time with the bins. And I know our colleagues from the south have been doing it for a lot of years and we tried it and it seems like people like them. I'm saying that that contract, when that garbage is picked up from our roadside, it doesn't go into our landfill. It leaves our municipality and goes somewhere else. I mean, we do have a landfill that people bring tipping fees and or to, you know, like land, like whatever they have for trailers and stuff like that. But on all that contract, now we don't have organics, but it, it leaves just from that contract. And we just moved a motion to extend that for two more years. It was originally three and to look at for two, an extension of two more years. So there is models out there that for whatever, however, but I will say that just in the sense of today's, today's dynamics around garbage and organics. I think myself, councillor Millen and councillor Eccles, we attended a session or a fella the year ago last January at Roma, but I think it's actually in Southgate that they're taking organics and making energy. So the dynamics have changed because there is money in the, in those organics now because they are converting that organics into energy and and gas or clean gas or whatever. So there, there is a lot of dynamics that are changing and you know, efficiency is, is good, is good. It just, I know when we went to that contract, it's, we, we still have to pay. It gets still there on that sense of cost. But material does leave. If, if the, if the part is around not having landfill space. So I just shared that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Pimber.
Thanks, Warden. Yeah, I just offered my support to councillor Boddy over there. This is really a, a process, I think we wanted to get going. As opposed to having nine single voices trying to fight your own battle that we can unite and be one voice as a group and do better things to make efficiencies in the in the world of waste management. We all know that things have changed a lot in 30 years. So men are still changing and evolving every day. But it was really around us trying to find efficiencies amongst the nine of us to be able to move this board. You're right, it's a quarter of a million dollars as they ask. Hopefully, we don't get that far on it on the price side of things, but we don't know what we don't know right now. So we need to ask the question.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Greg.
Yeah, I was just going to say, one of the most controversial discussions probably any municipalities could have in the province would be on waste management. And when you get talking about right across boundaries from each other. So this more than a lot of studies, it does have a value add in terms of if it is demonstrated. And I'm looking at it right now. It was 1998. Was the landfill study because there's a preferred landfill site that's on page five of 533 pages right there in front of me. It gives you as a council that document that can prevent you from literally going at each other across the table on, on a discussion that is, can be and is demonstrated to be so controversial. And as he, as member Boddy indicated, waste management in the province is only going to get more strenuous. And it's occurring extremely quickly with population growth, even, even shortening that window. So we are going to get there. But I think at least the value in the document is it does provide probably a better environment for proper discussion. And and again, this time is only an ask to go into the budget. But if it does advance, it takes away some of the the personal feelings in such a controversial discussion. So thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I will go back just to know firsthand. So I'll go back to councillor McQueen.
Well, thank you, Madam Warden. And certainly, do we have to spend 250,000 to have that discussion or should we have a a discussion on the report that, that councillor Eccles has talked about and because I'm thinking, and I know in the past, some municipalities had landfill space and others didn't. And I remember the discussion, some didn't want to give up that space for others. But if the new model is, say, for example, like our contract, we have a, a countywide contract, pick up all the garbage, it leaves. Maybe you still have your, your, your own restation for your, for what comes in, but the garbage itself is from a contract across, across the county. I mean, like, to do that, like, what would be involved with looking at that? I just know from, it was a little bit tough for us to get follow through on what we ended up going down with the bins. You know, people saying pulling and stuff like that. I know Southgate has been doing it. There was some advocacy from Southgate to our staff and stuff, but it's gone through that process and it seems to work. But it leaves. So is that an easy possibility? I know, I know, I don't know what all the contracts coming due with all the municipalities, but if you have a larger company that's dealing with garbage, all we're looking at is providing the service. I guess it's for the cost and what that cost is. But if those that don't have landfill space, obviously that's a bigger issue than but even for ourselves, the roadside garbage is not going into our landfill, which is sort of unique. Which I think maybe helps eliminate some of that issue that was the issues of the past. Was we got space, you don't have space. Sorry, we don't want you to use our space because that's our space. I think that was part of the issue a few years back. The same.
Okay, thank you very much. And of course, we are just voting on, on bringing it forth for discussion in the 2026 budget. So, so this, this dialogue is very healthy. I think that gives staff a little heads up about the kinds of questions that are going to be coming forward. And and in addition to that would be the lens of what's changed. I know from the town of the mountains, we've extended the life of our landfill because we do drywall diversion and drywall recycling made a huge difference. So that again would be a different picture than what was happening 30 years ago. I also hear from, from the varied experiences of, of the historic dialogues on this that I'm sure all of us are going to be keen to get a hold of that 1994 report and be able to be on the same page when we come back to this and have a discussion. If somebody's referring to something to be able to get the full picture. And I think that will be a, a healthy continuation of this dialogue at that point in time. Okay, so with that, then I don't see any further hands up. And it was for all of the seven items that were contained in that report. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. So we'll need a moment to switch over to go into closed meeting, but I'll need the motion to go into closed. It's recommended that the committee, the whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section 239, two of the municipal act 2001 as amended to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations regarding social services, OPSU Local 266. May I ask for a motion? Moved by councillor Nielsen, seconded by councillor McKay. All those in favor?